Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental and Public Works Committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you take the role?
Commissioner Samasco, Commissioner Tamiyan.
Here.
Commissioner Bone.
Here.
Commissioner Riley.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greathop.
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann.
Here.
Six present.
At this time, do we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for what stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I move and support it.
And support it by Commissioner Greathop, moved by Commissioner Riley. Any citizens to be heard regarding environmental or public works matters? Seeing none, any updates? We did get an update from Drain Commissioner Bob Wylie. Maybe we can postpone that till later and have that.
I think it was fairly comprehensive, the last thing he came in and went through. You know, and he was asking for a request for additional, so.
He definitely gave us enough information.
Yeah.
Any conceptual initiatives from administration?
No, not at this time.
No old business, new business. The professional service agreement with CIT and Associates. See Matt here.
Good evening, Commissioners. If you recall, I believe it was two months ago, we came before you, myself, our landfill consultant, Mr. Bob Raits, with looking for some guidance on pursuing a renewal to the existing engineering services contract with CTI and Associates. Mr. Raits had done a market survey of their competition in the state and had essentially determined that the rates that we were paying were very competitive. And that coupled with their experience with the site, their in-depth work with our septic bioreactor, that it was our recommendation to the environmental committee that we pursue a contract extension, and you agreed with that. Tonight, we're here to present that contract, proposed contract, to you, and I'll let Mr. Raits give a little summary of that and of the process we went through to get here.
Good evening.
It's good evening.
For those who don't know me, my name is Bob Raits, and I've been working with Matt in the county a little over a year now, helping out with the landfill and a variety of activities, reviewing all the operations going on. One of the things we were involved with is looking at the engineering contract. And as Matt indicated, one of the things that I did to sort of rehash it for those is I went out and did a market survey of approximately five other consulting companies that have vast experience in solid waste. And after that review, it was determined that CTI's rates were reasonable, and with the experience they have, we came to the board and recommended that we pursue that contract. The board agreed. After that, we went back, Matt and I, and sat down and negotiated an agreement with CTI. You have the final document in front of you here. A couple of things that I want to point out. We currently have a contract with CTI that would run until the end of 2013. This contract will preempt that, and it'll start as of April 1st. And what we were able to negotiate is, we were able to get them to back down their rates from what we're currently paying in 2013, back down to what you were paying back in 2012. So you've saved approximately 2.5% on that contract by implementing this right now. If we were to continue on with the contract in place, you'd be paying higher rates than what was authorized, what will be authorized in this new contract. Now, the contract is going to be three and a half, three-plus years since it starts in April, and it'll run through the end of 2016. What we are also able to get was, effective in 2014, the rates are going to get bumped up by a dollar an hour on average, which is approximately somewhere around a half a percent, three quarters of a percent increase, a very small increase. And that rate will be held through the duration of that three-year contract. So for '14, '15, and '16, those rates will be held steady. Those rates will still be lower than what you're currently paying. So I think CTI has negotiated a very fair contract with St. Clair County. I think you'll see that the rates are very reasonable. In addition, there's two-year, there's potential for two one-year extensions beyond that, three years, and those rates have also been negotiated and fixed into this agreement. And that bumps it an extra dollar for each year, a dollar an hour on average for each year, which again is a very small percent. That extension is at the, I guess, the will of the county. If at the end of the three years, they wish to continue with CTI, it's in the contract. You've got set rates already, and you can just move forward as long as CTI is still willing. You've got the option for two of those. If at any time during the contract, Matt, St. Clair decides they would like to farm some of this work out, as we have previously done with some of the groundwater work, the contract is flexible enough that at any time, they can pull some of that work off and look for a different vendor if they feel that they can do better that way. Let's see if there's anything else that I missed.
Just a comment I'd like to make, just probably more for the new guys. We brought Bob and Jim in a year, a year and a half ago to take a look at our landfill from, you name it, everything from A to Z.
A to Z.
Yeah, recycling programs to back of the house, to all of the above. And this is probably one of the last pieces that he brought before us. We've been running that thing probably as lean as we can out there, and just where we're at with it, they've looked at everything. So we've saved a substantial amount of money in the operation out there, so.
Commissioners, any questions for Bob? None? Thank you. Thank you for your service to the county.
I'll move that we send this to the full board.
Support it by Commissioner Riley, motion made by Commissioner Rushing. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay, next one. Resolution supporting the submission of a Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Partnership Planning Grant application. Wow, that's a mouthful. Okay, I see Mr. Casey here from EDA.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Kaufman. I'm just going to begin the conversation about this evening's request, and then Mr. Donaldson is going to come up here and run you through a PowerPoint presentation on the process. I wanted to first give you a little history on the discussion that led to today, or this evening's request. The I-69 Next Michigan Development Corporation has been going through a process that spans several months, where they've been looking at it, considering establishing Renaissance Zones or tax-free areas in some of the communities that are participants to that initiative. That process has to go through the State of Michigan for approval and so on. So as a part of that discussion and identifying which communities were interested in going through that process, it became obvious that some of the properties that were being considered for these tax-free areas lacked some critical public infrastructure, and some of these communities are small townships that don't necessarily have the wherewithal to issue bonds or to finance those improvements. In other words, they would be looking to alternative sources of funding to try to assist them in order to develop industrial parks that would, you know, support their interest in creating jobs, as well as new taxes in the future. And so at the January board meeting of the Next Michigan Development Corporation, the board discussed the possibility of all four counties coming together and applying for a planning grant to the Federal Economic Development Administration. The planning grant, if granted, would be used to create a comprehensive economic development strategic plan. Currently, the three other counties are not in a planning federally designated planning area, and they've had this discussion over the years, in particular between Chiauasi County and Genesee County, about establishing such a plan, but they have not done so to date. I think the initiative for I-69, one of the benefits that we've seen from that is the collaboration among all of these different communities, working together, combining some of their resources to market the region, the I-69 corridor, as well as their industrial parks. It's been a big benefit, I think, to everybody, and they recognize that. And so what they did is they established an ad hoc committee in January to begin looking into what is the process to create a SEDs, to apply for the grant, and what are the potential benefits to the communities that are located in each of the four counties to go through this process. That ad hoc committee has now met, I believe, three times. They've talked to the Economic Development Administration about the process, they've talked to the State of Michigan, they've talked to local partners, they've talked to grant writers, they've put together a lot of information that leads us to where we are today. And where we are is to go forward and to seek a planning, a partnership planning grant requires a resolution of support from each of the counties that plan to participate in that, excuse me, in that application process. So that's what we're here to do today, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff, and he's going to run you through the specifics on the process.
I just have a couple slides that might answer any questions that come up. As Dan mentioned, you know why we're here this evening, and that is to request approval of a resolution in support of going after this partnership grant. I think probably the question on most of your minds would be, what would be the benefit of going after this grant? Most, more specifically, it's to make our region eligible for competitive federal funds from several different sources, not just from the Economic Development Administration, as you can see up there, the federal highways, housing, urban development, CDBG, EPA, Department of Energy, US Department of Agriculture, et cetera. All of those agencies have funding categories and pots of eligible funding that are only made available to regions that participate in a SEDs process, the US EDA SEDs recognized process. So essentially, developing this plan gets our regions put in the door to be eligible for some of these different categories and pots of funding. And then getting a little more specific, Genesee County's involvement in this region makes, allows St. Clair County to gain access to, funds are typically reserved for areas or regions of economic distress. Currently, we don't now meet the criteria for that sort of, which I think, which is a good thing, but being part of that process, that SEDs process that Genesee County would be involved in, would allow St. Clair County to gain access to those kind of funds if we were involved in a SEDs process and they were partnership and with us. What is the cost of going after this for St. Clair County? Well, the grant requires a one-to-one or a 50/50 match, if you will. Looking into similar projects that have developed around the state and as well as around the country, the ad hoc committee that Dan mentioned came up with a total project cost of approximately about $140,000. The one-to-one or 50/50 match would be $70,000. There's four counties involved. Some counties have more partners at the table, some don't. What it breaks down to for St. Clair Counties, you can see here, an in-kind match would be, which would be staff time of $10,000, and that would be made up of time contributed by both county staff as well as staff from St. Clair County Economic Development Alliance. And then lastly, a cash match of $5,000. It's not a requirement, but the ad hoc committee really felt if we wanted to put in a competitive grant application, if our region showed that we had some hard skin in the game, if you will, it would make our application more eligible. I have spoke with county administration about the potential for need for cash match. We've talked about where there could be a potential source for that hard cash match, and St. Clair County's contribution would be $5,000 towards the total project cost of $140,000. I know that print's really small, it's also in your packet, but that's a breakdown of where all the match would come from, from all different partners. And if you look here, you can see St. Clair County's portion is $5,000, a hard cash, $10,000 total match. Lastly, what's the timeframe of this right now? We're just in the grant application process to develop it, so each county and their partners are going back to their county boards during this month to seek resolutions of approval. Sometime around July, we hope to be able to submit a planning grant application to the US EDA, and then based on their timeframes, we're hopefully looking to hear back from them sometime around September, October regarding the award status. At that point, most likely, the local partners involved in this process, namely county staff as well as St. Clair County EDA, would come back to this board with what would amount to be some sort of agreement with the EPA executing the grant and moving forward with the project. And from that standpoint forward, we'd be looking probably at a one-year process to develop the strategy. So that being said, oh, lastly, of note, I think it's important to note that the lead agency on this would be the Next Michigan Development Corporation, and the fiduciary would be the Genesee Regional Chamber of Commerce. Originally, we were looking at having the MN, Next Michigan Development Corporation be the lead, be the fiduciary on this grant, but there was questions as to whether or not they met the eligibility criteria set out. So Genesee Regional Chamber of Commerce was glad to step up to the plate and take on that administrative burden, and we were glad that they're willing to do that, so.
Okay. Any questions for Jeffrey?
I have a few.
Commissioner Rushing. I mean, go ahead.
Have you got any commitments from any other counties yet, from the four counties?
I don't know if they've met yet or not.
All four of the counties are in the process of going through the approval. Chiauasi, their commission is meeting next week.
So as of today?
Genesee already, Genesee already has, I believe, don't quote me, I'm pretty sure the Genesee Commission has already approved it. And Lapierre has, they're scheduled, but they haven't acted yet.
Of the dollars, and I won't just ask about St. Clair County initially, we're going to put $5,000 in kind, that's $10,000, that's $15,000. That's above and beyond the funding that we're already giving the EDA for the Next Michigan Corporation as a county. That's above and beyond the funding we've already given to it.
That's correct. It's a separate request.
Okay. And then in the bottom, in the Next Michigan Development Corporation, where's that $10,000 coming from? Is that from the commitment from the other counties currently?
No, that's a good question. Actually, that, those are excess funds from last year's budget in the Next Michigan Development Corporation budget, and the reason why there are excess funds is all of the money that was raised in Genesee County was in excess of the $10,000 that was required, so basically all $10,000 of that money is from Genesee County. But it's held by the Next Michigan Development Corporation board.
When you started this, you said this is going to be for Renaissance Zones, is that the specific use for this grant?
No, it's not, but the point I was trying to make is that when we were having the dialogue about which areas should be designated for Renaissance Zones or shouldn't, one of the considerations was, do they have public infrastructure today or not? And if they don't, how are they, what's their plan to try to put it in place? So that just created some additional dialogue about what other tools are out there that would enable these communities to fund that kind of activity. And again, you know, putting in water and sewer, if you're a small community, can be very difficult, if not cost prohibitive. So having access to federal funds from all of these different agencies would be a huge benefit for a lot of those communities.
It'll be 70 and 70, $70,000 or even $140,000 is not going to put a sewer system in.
No, this is just, that's the cost to do the planning.
But you're using that for, the $140,000, what is the actual dollars going to be used for? Do you have a business plan or anything, or where you're actually going to use those dollars? You're asking for a grant, do you know where you want to spend those dollars at, or you just going to wait till you get the money and then plan for it?
No, they haven't established a budget yet, but we're working off of the EDA's criteria. The EDA will do a match of up to $100,000, but lately, they've been doing matches for SEDs grants or projects of $60,000 to $80,000. And so we're requesting $70,000 from them. Their rules require that half of our match has to be cash, the other half can be in-kind. So that's all the extent to which we've gone with that. We know that based on other SED plans that have been developed by other organizations, that they typically are in that same price range.
I've had other discussions with you, but St. Clair County, out of the 31 municipalities, how many have actually signed on to the I-69? Because District 6, who I represent, every one of them had resolution in non-support of I-69, but you're asking for, well, it's tax dollars that you're asking for, whether it's in-kind or cash money, it's for services, it's still tax dollars that are being spent. And from that, the majority of who we represent have, the majority have resolutions in non-support of this, so it's kind of tough for me to support giving you additional tax dollars of who I represent in non-support currently.
Well, keep in mind that this SEDs plan will be, it will be in support of each and every community in all four counties, regardless of whether they signed on to the I-69 initiative or not.
To get to one of your questions, putting it in a locals' perspective, a few years back, St. Clair County developed a, just a local county Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, passed it on to the US EDA for approval, and as such, I don't know if you recall, but the county participated along with Ira Township in the expansion of a water line down there to facilitate some industrial, commercial development along the Marine City Highway. That funding category from US Rural Development would not have been available to, for that project, had it not been for the participation in that locals' Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy.
That brings another concern, that Ira Township, who I represent, that's actually in St. Clair County, so that benefited St. Clair County. We've given $10,000, another $15,000, that gets the dollar amount up to 25, and then EDA, I'm sure we're just short of $400,000 that we're funding currently?
What?
Out of our budget, goes to EDA? How much are we giving EDA?
About $400,000, yes.
So I'm concerned that the dollars, and you brought up that it's going to Genesee County initially, that's where the intent is, in your presentation.
Fiduciary. They would be the.
And possibly, St. Clair County can get a benefit from it, but the perception I'm getting is that this is Genesee County, and because they're part of this, this allows to get funds from the federal government. I'm incorrect on that? That's why I wanted to know your business plan, where the actual dollars are going to be spent, but you don't have that done yet.
Let me clarify one thing. If we have a SEDs plan, an approved SEDs plan, any of the communities in any of the four counties can take advantage of that and go to any of those federal agencies that we talked about. The fact that Genesee's a fiduciary on the grant is kind of irrelevant. They stepped up and said they'd be willing to do that, but it doesn't give them any more leverage than any of the other counties or any of the other communities.
Actually, it does, as part of the contract that they signed on, whatever county has more people sitting at the table, they've got more votes.
No, they're the fiduciary on the grant. The planning committee that will be established is going to be, have equal representation from all four counties.
You only get one seat at the table, so how many communities you have in St. Clair County? You got five or six total, right?
No, the planning, it's up to us, the organization that's making application to determine what the committee makeup is going to be, the ad hoc committee's already talked about that, and what they want is equal representation from all four counties.
That's enough for me.
Any other questions?
One question, Howard.
Commissioner Samasco.
Is this resolution necessary in order for the Michigan, the Next Michigan Development Corporation to apply for that grant? Is that required by state laws? It didn't seem to be federal law.
It's required by the EDA.
Okay. All right, so, and this is the US Economic Development Administration program? So without that, you couldn't make application for those funds?
That's correct.
Do we know what strings are attached to any of that? I mean, I don't know much about, other than seeing this at first blush, can you tell me a little bit about this, the EDA, what they expect of us as a county, or what they expect from the Next Michigan Development Corporation? And was collaborative collaboration and investment initiative?
A lot of that's usually hammered out during that next phase of, there'd be a notice of grant award, and then we'd have an opportunity to develop a cooperative agreement, and those issues are usually, that's where they come up, is during the cooperative agreement. But as of right now, going through the requirements of the grant, I have not come across any strings or special requirements on the funding. There may be, you know, as far, remember, we're just talking about getting funding to develop a comprehensive strategy in this way.
Could you do this, Jeff? Could you put in there something perhaps before it goes to full board on the parameters of this EDA program? I mean, I'm going to do a little research myself, I looked at it, it was interesting, but would that be something, because evidently you don't know if there's strings attached to what the federal EDA program is, only that you want to apply for these funds, correct?
At this, yeah, at this point, if I understand your question correctly, I think what we're applying for is funds to develop a strategy. Now, any projects that are identified in that strategy somewhere down the line, there could be strings attached to how the dollars are spent on those projects, but.
What I'm asking is this, we are in the process, per your recommendation, in applying for federal money, correct?
Correct.
Many times, federal money has strings attached, we know that. You don't know, as you speak today, what strings may or may not be attached in this grant application process just for the planning funds, correct?
Other than having a competitive bidding process to bring on, if we bring, use the federal dollars to bring on a consultant to help us develop the strategy, we would have to go through a federal competitive bidding process.
It seems pretty harmless to apply for money to develop a strategy for a regional collaboration, which is apparently what this is, in conjunction with this whole I-69 corridor concept, but I just want to be real careful, if we're going to make application for something, that somebody presents me some information about the depth and breadth and requirements of what else we may be required to do or not be able to do, or, that's my only question.
Commissioner Tom.
Jeff, if I understand this process correctly, this is a planning grant.
Correct.
And if we're successful and we prepare this plan, then the grants that would come from these various federal agencies, that would be a separate decision. They would have to come back to the different municipalities for approval of that, and if there are strings attached, those municipalities would have an opportunity to review whatever strings or requirements there are in the grant. By approving this application for planning, we're not approving any of the project grants.
Not at all.
And the strings that are attached to this planning grant are the ones that you've outlined in this report, the hard and soft match.
That's right, yes. And then if we spend money to bring on somebody to assist in developing the strategy, we'd have to follow federal procurement departments. That's the only strings I've been able, I've identified in it.
Commissioner Greathop.
At this point.
Jeff, the $5,000 in cash, where is that coming from?
The county's Economic Development Fund, which is ongoing. The county's economic development fund, which is ongoing. Is there a specific?
There is, a number of years ago, the Board of Commissioners established an economic development fund. We've used them, used those dollars for a number of projects, including the Ira Township water line project. There have been a couple more that have come before the board as well.
We do have the money there.
Yes.
Any other questions? Just for clarification, to get the, oh, let me give the acronym here in a little bit. The CEDS funds, that could not go to an individual county. It has to be to a cooperative region for economic development. So those funds from all of those departments would not be made available unless we're in a collaborative relationship with other counties.
It's my understanding, yes, the US EDA only awards these kind of grants, planning grants, to regional cooperative efforts. Several years ago, Sinclair County developed, comprehensive economic development strategy. At the time, we contacted the EDA and asked about applying for a planning grant. And they quite simply said, you're not a big, you're Sinclair County, you're not a region. Come back to us when you're part of a greater region.
Okay, any other questions? Commissioner? Uh, Commissioner. Sorry. Administrator.
Yeah, I could just point a couple things out. In the, first of all, this is nothing more than a planning grant. And projects that might be eligible for some of the funding opportunities that Mr. Donaldson showed have not even been identified. One of the goals of the planning grant is to work with every single community within the county and identify what kind of projects they may have that could take advantage of those programs. The, there was a question earlier about are there strings attached? If you look on page three of the packet that was provided to you, the bottom half of the document, you'll see a heading called Summary of CEDS or SEDS Plan Requirements. Those are, if there are any strings attached to the planning grant itself, it would be these types of things, you know, such as, one of the things that the grant, that the planning document must do is identify specific individuals that are responsible or held accountable for certain tasks that are identified in the SEDS. They must provide regular reports back to all of the partners, as well as to the federal government. There must be identified very specific measures and annual reports filed. So there are some strings attached, and you'll find those under those bullet points on what's called, or labeled, page three and page four.
Any other questions? Commissioner Riley.
Yeah, I want to just touch on that 10,000 in kind, where's that coming from?
Either from our planning department or from the Economic Alliance.
Out of their budgets.
Out of their budget, is that correct?
Yeah, in staff time, not in hard dollars.
Commissioner Smasco.
Bill, I read the program requirements, and those weren't the kinds of strings I was talking about. I was just curious to see if there was some, you corrected my wrong, gentlemen, but this EDA grant money is for this green growth concept, it's focused on green growth, is it not? It's not for environmentally sustainable projects, is it, is it across-the-board type projects?
It's for public works-related grants typically.
But it's not focused on this green growth or green buildings or green jobs or any of that kind of thing?
That's my understanding, yes.
And this is my question, is there any other piece of this that we're required to participate in or refund money back if we don't do it? It may have been a bad question, but I just want to know if there's anything you knew about along those lines.
Yeah, no, it's, again, a strategy would be developed. Communities would be, and stakeholder groups would be brought together to submit potential projects. Those projects would be listed in the grant, and then those projects would then be eligible for funding from these types of agencies. Now, there's different categories of different types of funding and grants that come year to year with these agencies. Some have some types of barns, some don't. But specifically, no, this project here does not direct any of those types of projects to be green-friendly or sustainable types of projects or anything like that.
Yeah, typical kind of projects that would appear in a SEDS plan and would potentially be funded by either EDA, USDA, whoever it is, would include things like road resurfacing projects, sidewalk installation, could be the replacement of water and sewer lines or the upsizing of water and sewer lines. It could even be landfill-related investments if they're public facilities. There's a wide range of potential programs that we could be eligible for, including things like job training funds at the federal level when those become available and so on. So, but typically, it's for public works-related kind of projects.
Commissioner Rush.
Just a couple odds. Let me understand, you want to have the Genesee Regional Chamber of Commerce in charge of the fiduciary. Why would we put another level of government? It just seems there'd be a conflict of interest. They're going to look at their own backyard first, just on the surface. Explain to me why they wouldn't do that.
Well, they're not going to be the decision-makers on the process. The planning committee will be. The planning committee will be the entity that makes the decisions on what projects go into the final SEDS. And it'll be based upon a comprehensive.
So they're just going to watch the dollars?
They're just going to watch the dollars.
The next Michigan Development Corporation doesn't have a fiduciary currently?
It wasn't clear at the time that we were putting this together, whether the next Michigan Development Corporation meant the status necessary to be the fiduciary.
I just got one other question, is that potentially, if you get this, $140,000, could potentially be, because I know you have some contract employees at the next Michigan Development, potentially, is $140,000 going to pay for their salaries? Nobody's paid?
There's one consultant that the NMDC works with, which is, and they primarily, what they do is the administrative function of preparing resolutions for the board packets and so on. That's what Prima Civitas does. That's the only paid staff, if you want to call it that, that the next Michigan Development Corporation currently has.
Put it this way, if you didn't do this and you had a project that you wanted to get funding for, and if that project wasn't listed in this process, you wouldn't get any money for it. You wouldn't be eligible, so.
Any other questions? You know, if I could sum it up, I think one of the things that some of the commissioners are interested in is, you know, if they're going to be providing funding for some of those projects, if we could get some specific examples and of those kinds of projects, maybe in other areas, and how much the dollar value was. Because, you know, if we're spending $140,000, the four counties, and it's only going to bring in 10,000 in new sidewalks, why do it? You know, but if it's going to give us an opportunity to bring in million-dollar businesses or million-dollar infrastructure reworks, I think that's something we'd all be interested in.
The types of projects typically listed in regional SEDS of this scope are those million-dollar infrastructure types of projects you mentioned.
Could you make up, Jeffrey, some, and either email them to commissioners or have them before the next board meeting?
Howard, that's all available on the federal EDA website. They list all the grants from the various cycles and what they went for. December 17, 2012, $2 million disaster recovery, Lea, Yankton, South Dakota. It's all, it's right on the internet.
Okay.
I'll send you the link.
Okay.
And I'd be happy to follow up as well.
Okay, excellent. Any other discussion? Commissioner Graytop.
Make a motion to send it on to the full board.
Yeah, second. Second by Commissioner Bone. Any other discussion? Sitting down, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, name, motion carried. Next on the list is the Harson's Island Ferry transfer to the Blue Water Area Transit. And I saw Jim Wilson here, managing director. Did I get that title right?
General manager.
General manager. In other words, the boss.
I know some of this information has probably been provided, but I just thought I would give, try to give a quick overview of the funding that's available for the ferry service. Michigan Public Act 51 of 1951 is the legislation that governs how transportation funding is distributed and spent in Michigan. In 1976, that act was amended to add a section called the Comprehensive Transportation Fund for the purpose of funding public transportation service. At that time, as part of the compromise statewide to establish that Comprehensive Transportation Fund, ferry service was included as a public transportation service. And not only included, but given the highest priority of any of the modes of public transportation service. Of course, that was all done while I was still at MSU. But anyway, at that time, the decision was made that certain part of the transportation funds would be allocated each year to the Comprehensive Transportation Fund to pay for a very broadly worded definition of public transportation service. Since that time, there's been ferries throughout Michigan that have been receiving operating assistance through that fund. And they've also been able to access federal grants and subsidies through the Federal Transit Administration. And now, under the current federal transportation bill MAP 21, they've also included ferry funding under the Federal Highway Administration. It's my understanding, this year alone, the Federal Highway Administration funding for ferries nationwide is distributed by formula. And that by formula, Harson's Island Ferry is in line for about $690,000. And the state would like nothing more than to find some way to get that money to Harson's Island, but they've never been able to because there is no designated recipient of federal transportation funding in Sinclair County, except for Blue Water Area Transit. And we do not have a contractual relationship with the operator of the Harson's Island Ferry. So the state is anxious to take advantage of these federal funds that they've had to send back each year because there was no way to funnel them to the Harson's Island Ferry. And those funds this year came out of Federal Highway Administration, but out of a special and specific pot of money that's just for ferry service nationwide. I don't know if any of you've ever been over to Seattle and that area and seen the incredible ferry service that they operate throughout the San Juan Islands. But those are all funded as public transportation through the Federal Transit Administration. And Harson's Island is frankly, has been entitled to access its share of that funding all along, but it's had no way to do so. The federal funding that's involved for Federal Transit Administration and the highways is primarily gas tax money. Again, it's been designated at the federal level, though, that it's for use for public transportation, separate and distinct from money that can be used for roads. There are certain pots of money that are flexible that can be used for roads or public transit, but this is not one of them. These were, the Federal Highway Funds, again, is distributed by formula. Under MAP 21, the Federal Transit Administration is, they have an even larger fund for ferry service, and it's being distributed through a competitive grant selection process. That money can be used to pay for ferry boats or ferry boat facilities. Those funds are typically provided with an 80% federal and a 20% match that the state of Michigan has always provided. Okay, well, that's a little on the history of the funding. I've been at Blue Water Transit for 23 years. We looked at trying to help Harson's Island about 15 or 16 years ago and ran into some opposition at that time from people on the island that were interested in getting a bridge built instead of subsidizing the ferry service. So with the threat of a lawsuit, we walked away from it at that time. But I was contacted here a few months ago, again, to see if we would still be willing to try to help solve what seems to be a growing problem. And we said that if, you know, all the parties involved would ask us to help, that we would be willing to try once again to get the federal and state funding for the Harson's Island Ferry.
So at this time, just one quick question, Mr. Wilson. What do you need from this board, then, in order to expedite this, should the commissioners concur?
Well, I think there's just a general resolution in support of asking Blue Water Area Transit to assume the responsibilities of the MPSC in terms of overseeing the Harson's Island Ferry and pursue the federal and state funding that's available for the ferry service. And I think we've, we've got a resolution similar from Clay Township and from the Harson's Island Sinclair Flats Association. And we're working on getting one from the Harson's Island Transportation Authority. They verbally have agreed, but we're still dealing with some people that are out of town and trying to get signatures. And then the last that we were hoping to get was the County Commission, and there's support for us getting involved.
If we were to provide a letter from the board chair, would that suffice in place of a resolution?
Well, I'm not sure. I think that my, our legal counsel, who represents my board, is looking for something that's a little more ironclad in light of the, 15 years ago, we got quite a ways down the road before we were threatened with legal action and ended up wasting a lot of our money in the process of bailing out of that. And we just want to make sure that there's not anybody who's going to.
Do you need this right away, Jim?
No, we don't need this today.
Okay, we can do it at our next.
We could do it, we can prepare a resolution.
And to be quite honest, we're going to be having a budget workshop next week, too. We could do it right at that, too.
Commissioner Riley.
Well, one of the things that I have, and it might seem like a minor deal, but I know there's no county, as such, county money going towards us. That's correct.
That's correct.
But there is state money, and there is federal money. And I understand it might be very trivial, but I've had a lot of people, since this has been in the paper, either Paul, I have one letter that was handed out, I handed out tonight, and I got them in. It might, as small as it may seem, there's people saying, people move to Harson's Island. It isn't a huge area, but it's an island that they decided they wanted to live on. Therefore, why should I pay in my taxes, as small as it is, to run them back and forth and save them the funds? Now, I don't know how many of the Clay Township board members also live on the island, but that would be another factor I would say that I'd have to look at because that's kind of, you know, you're taking care of yourself in a sense. And that's how I would look at that. And the other thing is, maybe the people, the property owners on that island for all these years have had these problems with the transportation back and forth and complaining about the cost. Did they ever consider the property owners doing a milage for themselves like the township have to do if they want your busing services? Why should the people in the state, as minor as it may seem, or in Washington, why should they have to put up any money out of their pocket directly or indirectly? That money is taxpayers' money. I don't care what grant it comes out of or how it gets there, it's taxpayers' dollars. And it's for an island, I mean, there's Fawn Island, there's other islands. I mean, are we going to cover those? Are we going to cover the ones that go from Marine City to Canada with running people back? Are we gonna cover the ones that go from Marine City to Canada with running people back? I mean, I think this is the bigger picture than, than I think it's, it's coming out to be, and from the people I've talked to in the last week, including myself, I'm not real happy about it. And I won't support it. The Board might support it, but I'm not going to.
I just guess I got a question for you. Is that, is that really a county issue? I know out of principle, I know where you're coming from on the principle piece of it. We don't write the rules at that level, obviously. Is it screwed up? I would probably tend to agree with you. But from a county level, if the funds are available, do we not apply out of principle? You know, because we don't like what the feds do, or?
I, I see where you're going, Jeff, but I can't, I can't. The people that I represent in my three areas, I've got calls from those areas, and surprisingly, since it started hitting the paper and the radio, et cetera, those people that called said, you know what, I don't think this is right. Well, they're the people I'm representing, and whether my personal feelings have not as much to do with it as it does the other. I, I just, it's taxes to take care of an island where people have decided to live, and that's where I'm at.
Commissioner Rushing.
Well, I got similar concerns, and see if I got the figure, I was trying, he had a pretty good presentation there, so he had a lot of figures. You're saying potentially $690,000 from the federal government?
This year.
Right. How much from the state?
That, well, it's to be negotiated, but it's based on 50% of their eligible, what the state will accept as eligible expenses, so it could be as much as a million dollars.
Okay. Now, that's part of these letters that we've received. Potentially, will the ferry rates go down for the residents?
Well, our proposal to them at this time is that we would, if we were on board in time, we would not implement the increase that's scheduled for January, that we would use the surplus funds to take care of some desperately needed capital improvements.
Right, I'd be looking at a business plan, I mean, that's what you're looking at, upgrading the equipment, and then potentially somewhere down the road, you might even reduce the fees.
Right, because the state, the state is gonna be overseeing it every step of the way through MDOT. They're not gonna let me use money from the ferries for bus service.
And here's one I wanna, kind of might be addressed, Tom's concern, the dollars are already collected at the federal level.
And the state.
The money, right, the money's already there. So, it isn't like there's an additional tax dollars that are gonna be collected. Still tax that's gonna be spent somewhere.
Well, I, you know, my sense is that a lot of people that are opposed to it philosophically are probably opposed to the money going for public transportation in general. But this money, if it's not used to help Harson's Island, is probably gonna be used to pay for the next subway study in Detroit or some 24-hour bus service in Grand Rapids. It's not gonna fill a pothole for anybody in Michigan. It's simply going to be used for public transportation in other communities.
My concern is there's no additional taxes, it's just that some of the tax dollars currently being collected at the gas pump at the federal level, and we're at Golden State anyways, potentially could be used at Harson Island or in St. Clair County, whether it's Harson's Island or Ira Township or Clay Township, wherever.
Yeah, I mean, he's got a situation down there. He's got his above-ground diesel fuel tank that's about ready to roll into the St. Clair River. He's got a break wall in front of the, in front of it that's caving in, a pad underneath it that's in crumbles. He's got 700 feet of steel break wall that's all in desperate need of repair. It's only a matter of time before that starts interfering with his ability to even move people back and forth. And all that's the result of the arrangement they had, as far as I can tell, and their refusal for 37 years to accept the federal and state funding that they were entitled to.
Jim, can you tell us other ones that are in the state that have this, I mean, other?
Sugar, there's, the Eastern Upper Peninsula Transportation Authority operates three different ferry services that are all subsidized. And also.
Excuse me, are those the ones to Mackinac Island?
No, no, Neebish Island, Drummond Island, and Sugar Island.
Oh, okay.
And then, what's the name of the big island in Lake Michigan?
Beaver Island.
Beaver Island. They also receive a subsidy. The subsidy is only available for ferry service in the rural area. Okay, so it can't be used if somebody wants to start running hydro, computer, commuter plane, boats down the Detroit River from, from Mount Clemens to downtown. This money's not available for that. This money was really money that was part of a grand compromise for areas that probably are never gonna have bus service, and this was a way for them to get a share of that pot of money, and it was part of a deal that was struck. I don't know who was governor back then, it was 1976, but, you know, this was, other communities got in on the funding right away, and we just never have.
Commissioner Grayton.
Jim, the, the subsidy then would, you would, you would be contracting with the Champions Auto Ferry, you would contract them, you guys would take over, you would contract with them to operate this service. As time goes on, right now, Champion Auto Ferry owns all of the pieces of equipment, the property and things of that nature. As things change, and let's say they buy a new ferry, you guys become the owners of that new ferry and allow him to use. So, the longer you're with it, the more Blue Water Area Transit begins to acquire the assets of this company.
Yeah, eventually, it would probably be just left to the, you know, the real estate and the buildings that they would sell.
They would sell, the rest of it, you guys would end up actually owning.
Given enough time.
Now, there's a lot of people that are against it because they're saying people live on that island and they should pay their own way. They are still going to be paying a daily fee, or I mean, a travel fee. Right now, it's currently $8, and they will continue to pay that. The hundreds, or I should say, the thousands of duck hunters that go over there in the draw for the duck hunting that don't live on the island, they get to use that same ferry, pay the same $8.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's gonna be treated as a public conveyance, so you can't.
There is a state highway over there, 154 is a state highway.
Yep, and, you know, under, under Act 51 and under some of the federal guidelines, it's eligible for funding because it is considered a local road under certain definitions, so.
It sure seems to me that if there is money available up there, why don't we want to get that money for St. Clair County and use it in St. Clair County as opposed to not getting it and letting it go somewhere else?
Well, again, I've never, I've been at Blue Water Transit for 23 years, and we've never asked for a millage increase, and I'm hoping to retire long before that ever does happen. But when there's a chance to bring additional federal or state funding back to St. Clair County that otherwise is just gonna go to some other county for the same thing that we could use it for, I've, I've felt that, you know, it was my obligation to try to go after it.
And some of the repairs that need to be done would probably be done by local people, local jobs.
Well, yeah, if we, if we get the money to do those repairs, there's gonna be a better economic spinoff in St. Clair County than if that money goes to Grand Rapids to pay for midnight bus drivers.
Thank you. Commissioner Riley?
Just one quick comment. I, I understand, well, if we don't use the money, somebody else will be, but if it's, if it's, I'll go back to my state and federal tax money, everybody's always got their hand out for that stuff, and I, and I understand that, some of it's good for us, I understand that, too. But in a case like this, I think it's different than some of the other issues we go after grants for. And if we didn't get it, maybe the, and it probably would never happen, but if some other agency, be it another, another county, it's too bad they don't do the same thing and say, you know what, it's time to cut back on taxes. I don't care how small it is, it's just a matter of, I think, there's times that we should go after grants, and there's times that I think people, in this case down there, should fess up and take care of themselves.
I've, I've met with the, the head of their business, Island Business Group, and he's convinced that the fares, even at the $7 level, were choking off economic vitality and livelihood on the island, that it was driving down property values, it was scaring off potential business investors, and he thought, if nothing else, that if they could, if we could get a, an arrangement that would at least stabilize the fares for the long term, that that would go a long way towards reversing some of the economic problems created by the escalating fare on, on the ferry. So, again, my guess is that, you know, if we were to get involved, that it could be a very, very long time indeed before we would ever have to see another fare increase down there, and, you know, there's also a likelihood that we could even reduce fares further once we got the capital needs addressed. Without that, though, I don't see a very bright future for, for Harson's Island. If that break wall doesn't get repaired and soon, they're gonna have a hard time getting ferry boats in and out, and if they don't do something about that diesel tank before it rolls in the river, they're gonna have a major environmental problem to clean up. And all of this is stuff that, you know, I know people don't think throwing money at problems is the way to go, but there's some problems out there that desperately need some money thrown at them.
Howard, I'll make the motion if there's no more discussion.
Okay, do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Grayton?
I did have a question, if I could, Jeff.
Go ahead.
The question I had was the difference between, you're talking about transferring authority from the MPSC over to Blue Water Transportation.
Right.
And that Blue Water Transportation is a state commission under MDOT?
We are a governmental entity and an eligible authority under Act 51, and we are overseen by part of MDOT.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to, structurally, Michigan Department of Transportation is your parent authority.
Correct.
Versus MPSC is the licensing and regulation, maybe?
Correct.
Okay, and so then your mission statement, I'm trying to see what you guys do, we're gonna transfer authority from MPSC, MPSC over to you, and the mission statements are actually a little bit similar. I guess the question is, is there a funding difference? In other words, Department License and Regulation, Michigan Public Service Commission, they have funding, Department of Transportation has funding, is there an advantage?
There's no, the MPSC only has funding for itself, they have no funding to provide for the, for the ferry service.
So they're more strictly a regulatory agency?
Strictly, and primarily involved with regulating gas, natural gas companies.
So then, with the, with the transfer under your commission and MDOT, would there be more, let's see, one is, MDOT has funding for roads, transportation infrastructure, correct?
Correct.
And that's, is that what you're talking about, is grasping, bringing some of these funds back to St. Clair County?
Correct.
Through the Michigan Department of Transportation?
Correct, through the Comprehensive Transportation Fund.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but 10% of the MDOT fundings has to go toward public transportation?
See, and so.
The law says up to 10%, I think we'd be lucky if we got nine.
Oh, okay.
You know, so with Commissioner Riley's question, or some of his citizens' questions, why should we pay for Harson's Island? I mean, I really don't get that respectfully. To me, it does seem more like these, these dollars are out there, we're taxed, the government's gonna get that anyway, so we're trying to bring those dollars home and spend them here rather than in Detroit, rather than the Saginaw, rather than someplace else. I don't, so I don't see where a citizen that's informed would believe there's any impropriety with bringing those dollars home. And I do agree that every dollar you spend is a tax dollar, and it's not yours, I get that, but is there, do you think, Tom, maybe there's some confusion there that maybe by doing that, they think their tax dollars are being squandered here versus squandered someplace else?
It's, I'm very clear on what they're thinking is, and I, I outgold, Jeff, I think we got enough discussion.
Okay, no other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay, let the record show that it passed six, one.
Jim, thank you for coming, and you have a good vacation.
Okay, any questions for Matt on the Smith Creek Activities Report? Seeing none?
I see, I see the tonnage is going down again. I think we need to be making a move on where we need to go with this. Look like it's trending even lower this year.
Yes, it is. What I can tell you is that we have made inroads along the lines of finding additional volume, and hopefully, not too distant in the future, I'll be able to report to you some, some concrete things there. With respect to the in-county volumes, we're looking at that right now, and I'm not sure exactly why that is, to be honest with you, but we're investigating and trying to see if we get a sense of it.
We had 172,000 last year, and at the rate you're going, we might only get 125,000 this year.
Well, February and March are typically a little lower than what we see during the summer.
But you're still lower than the previous three years.
Yeah, I would agree with that. We're looking.
That's what we've been talking about.
We need to get this addressed, that's the only point I'm making.
Okay.
He's, I've been talking to Matt, we're, he's working on it, so.
Could I have a motion then to accept the Smith Creek?
You could make that motion.
I'll support it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay. Thank you, thank you, Matt. Any other environmental and public works matter? Seeing none? Going on?
I'm gonna, Mark, I'm gonna do, he's looking at me, I don't know if we want to do it here, I was gonna put you on the ways and means because I want to do it as an action item. Yeah, that's, that's fine.
It certainly can be under other.
You want to go up there, Mark? Talked to a lot of commissioners regarding the issue. It was brought to my attention probably 10 days ago, no more than two weeks ago. This happened to just be specifically at St. Clair at the time. Huge problem with the boat launch situations countywide. And St. Clair contacted me, they're in a situation where basically if you're launching your boat, there's only so much pavement, and water levels are down as such, you drive off the pavement and you basically get stuck in the mud. So if you have any boat that's of any type of trailblower size, so on and so forth, then you're in trouble. Now, after doing more homework on it, I called Mr. Grayton, he did some checking around down in Algonquin Clay, along with Marine City, I reached out to Marysville, spoke with them in the city of Port Huron, and Marine City, Marysville, you're not gonna be able to put any boats of any size in whatsoever. Granted, is this a county issue? Perhaps not, but when you talk, start talking countywide and you look at all the stuff that we spend, especially the Discover the Blue, I go back to our Discover the Blue campaign that we're involved in, spend a ton of money advertising out of the area, complain of water, so on and so forth, and you're not gonna be able to get your boats in of any, any particular size. Talked to Mark about it, I said, is there anything county, you know, what's, what's some different things that would be available? City of St. Clair, like all the municipalities, if they gotta write a check for 20 or $25,000 today, they're gonna tip over, they just don't have it. So I said, is it possible to look at a 2,000, a pull ahead perhaps on some of the millage monies that are available? As you know, the county Parks and Rec receives a millage money, then they distribute 25% back to the communities. Each community's allocated X amount of dollars, and I would like to make it available, and because it is an emergency situation, boating season is right around the corner here, that a municipality would have the ability to do a pull ahead on their funds to be able to address some of these issues, to get their boat launches available. Mark had went to City of St. Clair, discussed it, they're on board, Mark had taken it to his finance committee last Tuesday, they were on board with it. So I wanted to see if the county board was on board with it. Like I said, I know I spoke to some of you guys about this issue, and it is a pretty big deal, so, and then, not just saying St. Clair, but.
Jeff, I think it's a great deal. The thing is, if we took the, from the 14 now, if we took the money from the 14 budget, out of his.
And I'm not, I mean, if they've got some fund balance in Parks and Rec, I thought, your thought was you would be able to pay for the fund balance, and St. Clair just doesn't receive their 2014 allocation. And I think you would need to make it available to any of the other municipalities that, that are faced with these issues, because I could step back, and then, like I said, I look at the bigger picture. With the Discover the Blue, we're the, we're the fourth hit website in the state of Michigan, you know, how many people bring their boats up, and I mean, it's a big, it's a big deal for this area.
Well, if you take a good look at any of the reverse, I mean, like Black River, for instance, just down, my gosh, there's areas that got new land you didn't even know was there. And so I, I think that we gotta do something, I agree with you.
And there's a relative, St. Clair's solution, they have the geographical piece of it, they have a fairly, I won't say inexpensive, solution, but it's not horrible, it's about a $24,000. have a fairly, I won't say inexpensive, solution, but it's not horrible, it's about a $24,000 fix, and hence, it's a city problem, I'll address that, and I'm not being a proponent that the county should write the check, this is money that are going to be due to the cities, so if you give them that opportunity.
But we're talking about tourism dollars coming into St. Clair County. Just out of curiosity, just, I have a question, I can hold my question of other commissioners. Commissioner Samasco.
When Jeff first raised this question, I sent Mark a question on it to see if the board, his board, approved it, Mark approved it. It was, it was good, from my perspective, to see that the park board is going to get behind a program like this where there's an urgent need in the community, and they're willing to be flexible. I think it's really a good thing, I'm glad you're doing that. My only notation would be, you know, to launch a boat in certain waterfront communities is an urgent need, and just keep an open mind to other urgent needs that may arise in other districts that aren't waterfront districts, perhaps, you know, that may, I think it's a good thing, to have an open mind to consider those things, some you may do, some you may not, and I think it's overall a good plan, so.
Commissioner Rushing.
I believe everybody is going to support this. I think it's a great idea, it's also no tax increase thing, it's just forwarding the money, and the concern I already addressed Mark on is that it's actually going to potentially put an additional 257,000 in their hands to make improvements for the waterfront. And it isn't just forwarding their money that they would get anyway from the milled that's been approved.
257, it's St. Clair's portion's 23,000.
Right, but everyone took advantage of this, and, including the city of Port Huron. If all five communities here did do this, potentially it's 257.
I think, truthfully talking to everybody, Port Huron, well, and I'll talk a little bit about the dredging funds, because I've talked to the legislators about this, I've talked to the, oh, forgot, I called the guy over at the state with the DQ, DNR, talked to everybody. They addressed the dredging issues statewide. Some of the marinas received dredging funds, some of them didn't, but they didn't, they didn't address the boat launch issues. And it's not just, it's literally everybody all over the state, so, something that I think has got their attention, and they're going to go back and talk about it, and there may be some things in the future on the boat launch stuff.
Now, I'm assuming that if we do this advance to, in the milled, to those communities that request it, that it would be stipulated that this has to be used for the boat launch?
It's up to their discretion, it's their park and rec money.
Yeah.
I think Parks and Rec should drive the resolution, if they approve it, and, you know, we generally agree, we just approve their action, that's what I have to see it go.
Okay.
That was my question, I was wondering what action we're going to take.
Yep. If you want to leave it open-ended, I'm comfortable with that.
Mark?
Well, if you looked at open-ended, every community might, and we, we have a different discussion.
Oh, okay.
But, you know, on your, I did the bold point, based on the discussions with Jeff and others, I did the bold point thing in front of it. I just kind of mapped out if every community that I knew of had a public boat launch took advantage of it, what it would cost. Now, if you open it up, you open it up to everybody's a lot more.
Steve already addressed that, he said if there's another emergency situation, then we'll address it on that.
Right, absolutely. Case by case basis.
This is just for the emergency needs of the boat launch.
Yeah. This is, this is a unique circumstance, where they're talking at federal level, they're talking about it at the state level, and they're talking about providing loan opportunities for private businesses on the state level, so this kind of is a piece of the puzzle. The bad news, good news is we're getting such low interest on our savings, Tim Ward, who's now serving as a member of our finance committee, he pointed out, we're getting way below 2% on this money anyway, so why, you know, this is an opportunity to kind of pay it forward and get some good for the communities that most communities, as part of their budgeting process, designate what they're going to do with the coming year's allocation, so they probably already made commitments for this year's allocations, and this seems to be a really prudent way of getting the money out there to, to help address a small piece of the statewide problem.
Okay, so, the understanding then is it will be restricted to boat launch and boat launch facilities?
My understanding is whatever Parks and Rec initiative comes to our board, we're going to review it and probably approve it.
I don't think you can specifically say, I can tell you that it would be the intent, I mean, if somebody can come in and plead their case, hence, I'm pleading St. Clair's case, I don't think you can say it specifically, it would ultimately go to them, a pull ahead on their Parks and Rec money, but I can tell you what their use is for. I mean, if somebody else comes before us and it's just, they want to pull ahead for-
Somebody could say, I need an emergency playground, I'm not sure that's-
I'm not sure it's an emergency.
With Parks and Rec or else, I think it's just-
Yeah, Howard, what will happen, like in a township, they have their Park and Rec Board, they're an advisory board to the township board. Then the township will decide if the Park and Rec and Board have any planned things that they have with that money. We don't want every township necessarily have to come to get our blessings and spend the money what they need.
Okay.
I don't think that'd be a good thing to do. I think they should have the authority to take their money that they're entitled to anyways. All we're doing is okaying for them to get a year in advance, and they might not even take it all, just enough to do the project that they want.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of seeing this?
No motion.
No motion?
I would make a motion to have the ability, I guess, to pull headphones for 2014-
I would support that motion then.
Regarding emergency.
Needs?
Needs.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? By the way, who was the second on that?
I did.
Commissioner Graytop.
I appreciate you working so quick, like I said, this thing just got dropped into my lap no more than 10 days ago, and, you know, Chinese fire drill to get these things open, because boating season is upon us, so.
Okay.
Thanks, Mark.
For information only, the Park and Rec financial documents, we have Mark here, if you have any questions on that. I see him scooting out pretty fast.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to receive and file packets.
Absolutely.
Moved, second by Commissioner Graytop, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, we have to go into executive session.
Executive session.
Oh. I would make a motion that we adjourn from here, go into executive session, and then adjourn the full meeting thereafter.
Okay. We are going into executive session.
Couple hours, you know, I mean.
I'd like to, at this time, reconvene the Environmental and Public Works Committee meeting, and entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move adjourn.
Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Howard, how come you went first?
I would say absolutely. I'm sorry. You need the power.
Thought maybe Howard was getting up, and he doesn't. Do we have to wait for Chris?
I was, yeah, I was some-
I can fill in.
Yeah, you can do it. Let it roll.
Okay. All of the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Human Services Committee to order, with roll call, please.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Tamian?
Here.
Commissioner Riley?
Here.
Commissioner Bone?
Here.
And Commissioner?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any additions or deletions, or changes to the agenda?
I'd make a motion to accept as presented.
Board?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any citizens to be heard? Anyway, any updates?
Could I just throw out a quick reminder to the board that we do have a vacancy on the DHS Board? One of the members retired a couple of months ago, and we provided you with some information last month. If you have anyone that's interested, please ask me to give us a call.
Is that in that large position?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Conceptual initiatives?
Nothing at this time.
Nothing?
Old business? New business? We have the library internet connection agreement with Reese.
Hi, I'm Dale Kittendorf, I'm representing the library tonight, Allison's on vacation. So, my understanding is that this has already been approved, I'm just providing background information if there are any questions.
Do we have any, any questions anybody would like to ask?
I think this is pretty much the consistent agreement we've had with Risa all along for this service.
I would make a motion, we send it out to the full board.
Support.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Nay.
We have any other human service matters? Under information only, health department information update?
I, just a couple things, I attended the health board meeting, and they've listed all of their concerns they have, but one of the, at least at the meeting, one of the things that was mentioned, I thought it was of special interest, the governor has requested that the state legislature move forward with the Affordable Healthcare Act in terms of adding on the number of people for Medicaid. For St. Clair County, it's either 3,000 or 5,000 additional people would be covered with, under Medicaid. The Affordable Healthcare Act will be treating Medicaid patients very much like they treat Medicare patients, and so consequently, a number of doctors that in the past had basically said, you know, we don't want to deal with Medicaid people, are now saying, yes, we want them. And in terms of improving the healthcare of the county, for these people, it would be a real, real plus. Dr. Merkananti is very much interested in, in supporting and getting support for that expanded Medicaid program that the governor would like to move forward on. So if you see your state representative, you might want to encourage them to support their governor.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Any other discussion on this?
I move we receive and file packets.
Board?
Move and support it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a motion for adjournment.
So we adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
At 7:37, I would like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Judiciary Public Safety Committee meeting to order. Mark will take the role, please.
Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Tamian?
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here.
Commissioner Bone?
Here.
Commissioner Riley?
Here.
Commissioner Graytop?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Under additions, deletions, and changes to the agenda, we have an A, but that has been removed, so at this point, I will ask if there are any other additions or-
I move the approval of the agenda as presented.
Moved.
Support.
And supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any citizens wishing to address the Judiciary and Public Safety Committee? Seeing none, we'll move on to updates. Any commissioners with updates? Conceptual initiatives? Seeing none, no old business, we'll move into new business. Item 7A is the 2010 Emergency Management Planning Grant Agreement. You have that copy in front of you. It looks like an additional 40, $257,000, and there is no local match required.
Move we send it to the full board?
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, it will go to the full board. 7B is the 2011 Emergency Management Planning Grant Application. That one is very similar in that this one is about $12,951 additional, with again, no local match.
Move we send it to the full board?
Support.
Moved and supported, it will go to the full board if we all agree. How many are in agreement?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It will go to the full board, motion has carried. Are there any other judiciary public safety matters, from anybody? I would like to comment that the emergency services project out at the airport is coming along very nicely, I was out there yesterday, they're getting very, very close with some completion on that. I think that once the fiber optics, which is due to land out there probably in May, once that happens, I think we're going to see emergency services moving out there full time, so it's looking good, but I will keep you appraised.
Just to add to that, you will see another, in the Ways and Means piece, coming up on the other buildings out there, that ties in with all the other emergency management stuff.
Okay. One other, and just hand it to me, and we've done this before, but I'll do it again, Emergency Services Breakfast is Friday, May 3, 2013, out at Four Lakes. If you're interested in attending that breakfast, it's a huge, great breakfast, it'd be a good program, and then just golf at 11 o'clock. See any of your local commissioners for information on that. Ready? Anything else?
Aye.
Then move we receive and file packets pertaining to judicial and public safety matters?
I have a motion.
Support.
And a support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm ready for an adjournment motion.
Move we adjourn.
And supported?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
At 7:40 PM, Judiciary and Public Safety Committee meeting is adjourned.
This time, I'd like to bring the Ways and Means Committee for the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Tamian?
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here.
Commissioner Bone?
Here.
Commissioner Riley?
Here.
Commissioner Graytop?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
I see we have an addition, but I didn't get the revisions, so.
It's just one, it's just going to be an addition of one meeting.
Actually, there's, well, we'll put it on, and then I'll talk about a couple of things I've got for you guys.
Move we add to the agenda the Board of Commissioners meeting scheduled revisions?
Board?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I move we approve the agenda as amended.
Board?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Any citizens wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we'll move to updates. Do we have any updates?
Uh, yeah, I've got two, actually. We're going to have a workshop next week, met with the sheriff, a couple things, affordable healthcare issues, and some of the numbers in the jail population, seeing a decline. Pretty good chance, well, it's not a pretty good chance, we're going to have to make some midstream budget adjustments here, and I want to start talking about some of the budgeting process, there's been live discussions. Bill, I know you were at the Department head meeting the other day.
Yep.
And really get, get this stuff going and get working on it. I think Carrie Hefting has the numbers that we can kind of use as some of our projections, so we can start working off and really start having that discussion as far as how we want to move forward with it. So I'd like to get a workshop next Thursday at 5:30?
5:30 on the 11th.
Yes. And then, on the 18th, we've got our full board meeting. I have Joe Rankin coming in at 4 o'clock. Joe Rankin is our, for the commissioners that can attend, and we're gonna have that, it's going to be part of our retiree healthcare discussion, some of the, as you all know, we made some changes, that was the first piece of it. Joe's gonna get back in front of us, and we're gonna discuss all the other issues that we had as far as that sheet goes. There's still some more things that we need to be talking about, and I want to get Joe back in here at 4 o'clock on the 18th, so.
First one was 5:30?
5:30. And following Thursday, next Thursday, and on the 18th, Joe Rankin is the plant morang guy that helped facilitate all the stuff. And then, Bill, can you send out an email to reach out to everybody on that, as far as all the people that were part of the committee before?
Part of the committee?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, I just wrote commission to him, whomever, to commissioners, because there's just, like I said, there's just a lot of other things out there that we need to talk about, so.
On the 18th, Jeff, that's another workshop at 4?
4 o'clock, yeah.
It's not really a workshop, right? It's the retiree healthcare workshop.
It's retiree healthcare work, group workshop.
But it's not gonna be a published, sort of commissioners workshop.
Yeah, I mean, because of commissioners, I mean.
In the commissioner room downstairs?
You know, we probably can do it, actually, probably just do it across the hallway, I guess, depends on how many people show up.
If we publish it as a workshop, we have to have a forum, didn't we?
Okay. So if we just do it as a regular deal, and the commissioners, though, they can ask questions, answers, those types of things, if more than three of us show up, so, I mean, or do we do?
As long as you don't deliberate.
Can't make a decision.
You can't deliberate towards a decision. You can collect information, but you can't talk amongst yourselves for or against any opinion.
However you guys want to handle it, if I know I got four people, I guess we'll call it as a workshop, and.
I'll be there.
I, I would just soon call it a workshop.
Yeah, let's call it a workshop.
And, and I, I would just soon have it in here, you know.
Okay.
Makes it easy for everyone.
All right. Do we have any other updates? Okay, moving on to conceptual initiatives, do we have any? Move on to old business. Seeing none, we'll move to new business. At 7A, you have Resolution 1304 authorizing purchase of the property of the maintenance facility, and this is for final action tonight. I have a motion.